Mike.
Mike.
Thank you.
I'm not cold.
That's fine.
Want to come with the same?
Right.
I guess, right.
Nah. I'll take that on you.
Thank you.
Can you believe it?
I mean, I shake.
Oh, that's fine. Oh, my gosh.
A little bit.
Thank you.
Oh, that'd be fine. Thank you. Thank you very much.
For the end.
Okay.
All right. Good evening. Am I, am I on?
Hello.
I am.
I am now. Uh, someone in the back, how does this sound? Does it sound about the right volume level? Great. Thank you. All right. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the city of Chattahoochee Hills City Council for May 2nd, 2023 to order. Let the record reflect that all council members are present for tonight's meeting. Like to remind anyone who make, wants to make a public comment to fill out one of the yellow comment cards. You see those on the table up front? Hand them to the city attorney, handsome man in the jacket down there. We do have a, a public hearing today as well. So if you're here to make a comment on the public hearing rather than just a general public comment, please be sure to note that on the, on the card so that we call you up at the right time. Uh, if you would, please make sure that your cell phones are turned off and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is famous. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item tonight is the approval of the meeting agenda. Uh, just so you know, we're going to be adding a couple of announcements for the fire department in at the end of the presentations and proclamation section. Uh, is there anything else that we need added or removed tonight? If not, can I get a motion in a second, please, to approve the amended meeting agenda?
Make a motion to approve the amended meeting agenda.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Right. Uh, meeting agenda stands approved. Next up is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 4th, uh, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Make a motion. We approve the minutes of April 4th, 2023.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second. Anybody need anything changed? Any conversation about that? If not, all those in favor of adopting, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, I think I heard everybody. So those stand adopted unanimously. Uh, we have a couple of proclamations today. Uh, and I'll do them in, in order of the, the dates that they will take place. And then the fire department, like I said, has a couple of announcements. The first one is a proclamation for peace officers Memorial Day. Uh, whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as peace officers Memorial Day. And the week which falls, on which it falls as police week. And whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police has declared law enforcement officer safety and wellness a top priority. And the IACP Center of Officer Safety and Wellness promotes the importance of individual, agency, family, and community safety and wellness awareness. And whereas it's important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, responsibilities of their police departments, and that the members of our police departments recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the police department of the city of Chattahoochee Hills has grown to be a law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides vital public service. Therefore, I Mayor Tom Reed call upon all citizens of the city of Chattahoochee Hills and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations in our city to observe the week of May 15th through May 19th as police week and joining commemorating our police officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities. And in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Further, I call on all citizens of the city of Chattahoochee Hills to observe May 15th as peace officers Memorial Day and to honor in particular our own Mike vote as well as those other police officers who throughout their courageous deeds have lost their lives or become disabled in the performance of their duty. And, and you know, Mike is the, the particular example of somebody that many of us knew very well that, uh, uh, lost his life in service to the city. So. The other one is a Memorial Day proclamation. Whereas on Memorial Day, our nation pauses to remember the brave men and women in uniform and their sacrifice to protect the interests of our country and defend our freedoms. And whereas on this Memorial Day, the citizens of Chattahoochee Hills remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice for this country and wish to provide comfort to the families and friends of those who have lost a loved one as we are forever indebted to those who have died in defense of our republic. And whereas we reflect upon the enormous contributions to our community of our fallen warriors, we also pay tribute to the current generation of Chattahoochee Hills citizens and others who have chosen to serve in the United States Armed Forces as they are committed to sustaining a legacy of unyielding patriotism. And whereas the citizens of Chattahoochee Hills must always stand united in remembrance of those who have given so much so that we can live in freedom, prosperity, and enjoy the blessings our country has to offer. Therefore, I Mayor Tom Reed proclaim this 29th day of May, 2023 that we call the observance of Memorial Day to the attention of all of our citizens. Those are both issues that we talk about a lot here. The, the idea that there are those among us who run toward the dangerous thing that everybody else is running away from and always appreciate an opportunity to call them out and thank them. Greg, I know you've got a couple of announcements for some of our public safety officers that you would like to share, and I will, I will leave you all that thunder. Aye. Much though I want to say names and fun things.
You don't often get the opportunity to promote someone uh, into a higher rank. Uh, frequently those, you hold on to those positions for quite, quite a while. And it's not often that you get to promote somebody that you absolutely believe in all the time that, that is so deserving. So I'd like for you to, uh, know more about this gentleman. You gotta take, I hope this didn't go on. I hope I was.
I told that one.
Nobody else can hear you.
Okay.
Or him. Kevin Jones. I wonder if you know Kevin. Uh, he's been here since the city began. And so I am so excited to be able to promote him to captain. Kevin was one of the very credit firefighter EMTs that started in the city of 2007 actually.
In 2008 as this department began operation.
And so he's worked both part-time and full-time positions. And, um, recently retired, uh, from the city of South Fulton to come over to become full-time with Devin. Devin, would you, would you join me up here? And, and I'm gonna ask, uh, the boys and Stacy, if you could, just come on up and stand close. And we can get with him.
Now, the picture.
I hope. If you'll come, stand here.
Yeah.
Sounds too much like a marriage for you two. Can you tell you face me, right? I'm not gonna do that. Uh, yeah. Kevin and I worked together Fulton County. And, uh, I gotta tell you that, that this, this is a guy that I have put my life in his hands. With, with fire all around us or when death had claimed lives at a scene. Uh, this was a person you could look to, you could trust. Um. So it's a big personal deal for me. And I want you to celebrate with him too. So, uh, I do want to recognize his sons, Carson, Logan, and his friend Stacy, who's here. I said I was gonna recognize them all as family. That caused too much discussion in my office. So, uh, but here we are. Kevin, you, you know better than most what it means to be a career firefighter and an EMT. And you know what it means to be a leader. And I know you duck it. But you subscribe to the discipline of training. You understand the rigors of tactical procedure and then the benefits of mental and physical readiness. You know how these qualities and a devotion to serving others lend themselves to leading others. So because you exemplify the firefighter brotherhood and creed, because you serve others with a Samaritan spirit according to the Hippocratic oath, because you have earned the mantle of a senior firefighter who is more than capable of leading others, I promote you to the rank of fire captain within Chattahoochee Hills Fire Department.
Blood wing.
I was gonna say, that's that gun, right?
Wow. That'll go later.
D. Bad report, everyone understands. With the color brass, two bugles signifies fire captain. And if you don't know, bugles were the way America's first fire departments called the volunteers into action. One bugle for a lieutenant, two bugles for captain, and so on. The brass is, um, is a thing you, I guess, some folks look forward to it. Kevin's been ducking it all of his career, but he's, he's so, um, he's so capable. And Chief McCarragher will explain the red helmet. Won't you, too?
So. In the fire service, all of our helmets have colors that signify things. Kevin's been wearing a black helmet for most all his career. Means he's a firefighter. He's always been capable of much more. As you progress up through the ranks, you'll eventually go to a yellow helmet, which is an engineer, a sergeant. Then you'll go to red helmets, which signify that you're officer in charge. There'll be, you'll be a lieutenant or a captain. In our case, in this city, is a captain. So. When I present his helmet to him, he's no longer a firefighter. You are now a captain. And I'll.
I'll say anything. I had a few words.
Very much. Enjoying this day. Love it.
No, that's fine. That's fine. We, we are so, so blessed to have the caliber uh, firefighter that we have here. So a great place we've created and we've got great people working here. We have a, a recruit. It's a, it's a great story, uh, but he is coming from another assignment and is running a little late here. So we'll squeeze him in later on. Cause we're also gonna embarrass him up in front of everybody. This is just fun to do. All right. Uh, next up is public comment, uh, which is time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council to provide their input and opinions on any matter not scheduled for its own public hearing during tonight's meeting. Again, we do have a public hearing, so uh, please be careful about specifying. When your name is called, please come forward, speak into the microphone directly to the council, first stating your name and address for the record. You're allowed three minutes for your personal remarks, and I see that we have public comments, so.
We're doing this to Mayor first, Robert Richardson.
Robert Richardson, 9425 Hutchinson Ferry Road. I was threatened by the city manager, and I brought this to the attention of the city. Nothing was done. It went to executive session. Nothing was done. I want to know why nothing was done. I was threatened to never have a permit in this city again. Got a email here from Mr. Rockovich. So this situation has caused a ton of grief and aggravation for countless citizens and staff to the extent that I have deemed that property, property ineligible for more film permits. I want to know why. Why nothing was done. The government, but the governing body of an agency may close the portion during which the members are deliberating on hiring, appointing, compensating, disciplinary, or dismissing a public officer or employee. However, any portion of a meeting during which the body receives evidence or hears arguments on personnel matters must be open. That's official Georgia code 50-14-1 through 50-14-3. Why was this not public? I want to know those answers, and I request a public hearing. Also gonna give Troy and Richie their statements and ask them to read their statements to the public. Thank you.
Do that in your comments later, the mayor and council comments.
Also, one other thing on the movie studio, you better watch out for helicopter pad and an airport. It's coming too, and I've got the email if you want to see it.
Next, Renee Prince.
My name is Renee Prince, and I live at 13015 Hamilton Road. And I am reading a statement by Robert Richardson. It says, let me start by stating that before this incident occurred, and I had never met Robert Rockovitz, never spoken on the phone with him, never emailed or received an email from him, and never mentioned him. Reply to him or communicate with him in any way on social media or any other avenue. Any opinion he may have of me was made solely on the fact that I have been speaking at city council meetings, standing up for landowners' rights. On January the 22nd, 2023, I was threatened on social media by Robert Rockovitz with a fine for mud on the road. The mud was a result from filming on not only my land, but two other landowners. Me being the only male of the three owners. When a production company files a permit with Chat Hills, the production company is responsible for the roads and right of ways and must present evidence of a serendipity bond or comprehensive liability insurance, naming the city of Chat Hills has an additional insured. The landowner is in no way responsible for the roads or the right of ways. On January the 24th, 2023, I was asked to attend a meeting at the city hall on TDRs. It was attended by Richie Smith, Troy Betis, Mike Morton, Doug Cloud, Danine Crawford, and myself. Robert Rock, Rockovitz was not invited to the meeting, but he was sitting in what I assumed to be his office with the door open. The meeting was talking about TDRs, and it was about this time Doug had to leave for an appointment. Richie asked who would be in charge over the TDRs, and I think it was Mike who answered that Robbie would be. Richie then stated he was okay, not okay, with Robbie having that much power. At this point, Robert Rockovitz came out of his office and said, I heard my name. Sorry, I'm late for the meeting. He sat down beside me at the end of the table on the right side, and Richie was sitting on my left side. The meeting lasted about five more minutes. Has the meeting ended? I asked Robert Rockovitz if I could talk to him for a minute. He said, sure. What you got? I told him I did not appreciate being caught out on social media and threatened with the fine, and that I thought it was unprofessional. At that point, he aggressively jumped up from his chair with his fists clenched. He turned red and wild-eyed and began yelling at me, yelling at me. One of the things he yelled was, you might be able to bully our mayor around, but you're not going to bully me. He yelled, you're not going to bully me around at least twice. Both councilman Schmidt and Betis jumped up thinking a fight could occur from his actions. I remained seated and calm and never raised my voice. Mr. Betis was trying to calm Mr. Rockovitz down by Mr. Rockovitz yelled three times at me. You'll never get another permit in this city, and I'll make sure of it. Danine and I walked outside, followed by Richie. I asked Danine if that was just, if that just really happened. Did she hear him threat, did she hear him threaten me? She replied, I don't know how you kept calm. Councilman Betis? Okay.
Next, Danine Crawford.
Danine Crawford, 5575 Cochrane Mill Road. I had the opportunity to attend a meeting with Doug Cloud, Mike Morton, Councilman Schmidt, Councilman Betis, and Robert Richardson to better understand the TDR ordinance on January the 24th. The TDR meeting had ended, and Robbie and Robert were sitting at one end of the table facing each other. The first comment that I heard as I was trying to exit the room was that Robbie raising his voice telling Robert Richardson, you are not going to come in here and threaten me like you do the mayor. Robbie was standing up from his chair, shuffling papers in front of him, and was red in the face. Robert Richardson never raised his voice and remained seated back into his chair in a very open conversation body language pose and stated, I'm not threatening you. I felt threatened by your comments directed toward me on social media. I felt like you could have called and discussed it over the phone, not social media. I don't see how you can find me for the cleanup process of the streets when you're permitted with a production company, just like I am. Robbie sat back down in his chair and stated, well, I know what I can do, and that is not allow another permit on your property. Why do you want them on your property anyway? They are making a mess. Oh, I know why, because they are paying you really good. Robert remained calm and stated, the city is making money from them also, but you cannot punish me or fine me for their mess with your permit. Robbie again stated multiple times, well, I won't allow another permit on your property. You can guarantee that. Robert stepped around Troy, Councilman Betis, towards the door. Troy stepped in between Robbie and Robert and began asking Robbie the process of permitting production studios through the city and what the legal stance was. Robert then exited the room with Richie Smith and myself.
Next, Nancy Richardson.
Nancy Richardson, 9425 Hutchinson Ferry Road. I was born, grew up, and live in Chattahoochee Hills. There are two issues I'd like to talk about tonight. First, the investigation into the incident that happened on January 24th involving two city councilmen, a city's employee, and three residents was a smokescreen to cover up one of the most blatant abuses of power that can happen in city government. A city employee threatened the rights of a citizen in a very confrontational manner, but yet the city council chose to take no action. Yes, the citizen is with my husband, and I believe he was targeted due to his speaking up at council meetings and support of citizens' rights. Every citizen of Chattahoochee Hills should be aware that this city council finds this behavior acceptable and that this could happen to the other citizens in the future. The second issue is the project rosebud application. Citizens should be aware that the city council changed the unified development code in order for the application to fit Chat Hills restrictions. As city council representatives, you are elected to represent the people that voted for you, not for your own personal agendas. I have spoken with several lifetime residents of Chat Hills that sadly have the outlook of, it doesn't matter if I show up and speak out because the council is going to do what they want to, and I can't do anything about it. I don't know how in good conscience you can represent your constituents and at the same time be in favor of a massive movie studio disrupting our rural community and way of life. I know firsthand how much traffic the charter school generates on a daily basis, and I can only imagine the volume of cars, box trucks, and other large vehicles that will travel our rural roads if the studio is approved. I urge you to consider the negative lasting impacts of a project this size will have on our city.
That was the last one, Mr. Mayor. All right. Next up are our staff reports. We'll start with the financial update from the city manager.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Welcome to May. Where we finally made it into spring. Uh, you have before you the financial report, uh, that got us through the end of April, April 27th. Can you hear me okay? Is that good? Okay. I have a different report in front of me. I mean, everything's the same with the exception of what I did was I removed, uh, some revenues that aren't really collection revenues. Those are like grant revenues that we receive. And it gives a better idea. So I'm gonna report those to you. You're not seeing them on your paper. So when you look down at how many revenues we've collected, um, I'm at 4.366 for total revenues. Again, you're gonna see a larger number because that includes some grants, $325,000 for the fire truck and that kind of stuff. And then that's, that's a hundred percent of the collections we budgeted. And that's 9.5% about 9.6% more than we did last year. Uh, so that's good with our, our revenues. We're, we're still collecting. We still have a couple of months to go. Again, we're only 81.4% through the fiscal year. Uh, other financing sources, we have hotel motel tax. Uh, we collected 93% of that, so we're up there. Same thing with T-Spots, 89%. We've collected a lot there. And, uh, we got more to collect. And matter of fact, today we had, uh, some paving representatives here along with our engineer and Darrell met, uh, cause we're working on RFP for the T-Spot. So the T-Spot money you see for, for the sake of Mayor Council and the citizens is gonna be spent. It's gonna be spent this year on a big project. So you're gonna see some roads drastically improve throughout the city. And then we get into expenditures. We're right on track. The expenditures, we, uh, we're blowing a lot of areas, of course, in the, in the departments. That sounds a little bit better. So we're 53.6% through all our expenditures and overall for the overall budget, we're collecting about 4.4, 43%. We've, I'm sorry, we spent 43.8, and we've collected a total of 88%. Uh, so that's at 81.4% through the fiscal year. Uh, we're, we're right on target where we are. We've got two more months left. Last Thursday, we talked a little bit about the budget that we got coming before you in the fiscal year 2024. So you're gonna hear a lot more about that. You're also gonna hear more, um, at the work session, and we got, we gotta schedule some public hearings coming up next month at first in June, and then at the end of June. So I have two public hearings for adopting the budget. We're gonna advertise that in the paper. We gotta advertise those public hearings as well. Um. I've got a couple of other things, but if you have any questions about the financials, I can talk about that. And real quick, this, um, the newsletter, that's also on the website. These are on the website. We post these website. Uh, the newsletters that citizen report I talk about every month gives you a better clear, a clear idea of it. And, uh, so that's that's the finances. I wanted to point, walk over here with my mic real quick to Mike Morton. This guy right here is gonna be celebrating his 12th year with the city on Monday. So I want to recognize Mike. So. Starting the, starting on the, uh, the next Monday will be the 13th year with the city. So let's hope for another 13 more years, you know, got a lot. He's, he's done a lot. He stays very busy. We, we got him some help with, with Katie, so, uh, we stay very, very busy. Um. I don't know. I know it's not part of the place when we have public comment. Obviously, you've heard some comments, and I know it's not the place. I just want to say for the record, um, if you're gonna hear reports and comments that were submitted about me during an interaction, I request that other reports be read into the record from others that are in the room. Because you've only heard one side. So I want to state that for the record. Also, I want to state for the record that I made an effort on three different occasions to apologize to Mr. Richardson. And he's denied me three times to apologize. Uh, not for the interaction, but the tone I took. I do want to apologize for the tone I took with Mr. Richardson during that meeting. But I do not apologize for standing up for people like Mike Morton, who also has a statement that was given and other employees that were given. So Mr. Richardson, I apologize for my tone, and I hope we can shake hands and move on. I'd be happy to do that. I mean, have a, have a cup of coffee. Uh, beer summit. I like beer summits. But I mean, I'd be happy to do that. I, I just want to get past this. And we all work together. We're all a team. The city is a great city. Everybody's done really, really good job getting us to where we are today. This council has a lot of pressure on them right now. They have a lot of agenda items before them. So I think we need to support them no matter what direction you go. But I just want to state for the record, I'm, I'm here to serve. And I don't want anybody to think, there's a lot of other people in this audience that don't know what happened, weren't there. So they're hearing that one side. So. This is government. So there are open record laws. I ask you to do an open records quest if you want to see the other reports that were also submitted, one by me and also employees. So just want to say that for the record. Again, I'm here for you and continue to serve and be happy to answer any questions you have about the budget. On a latter note.
I'm just gonna point out something that we talked about in the work session about the budget. People get confused about how much money we have because in a quirk of accounting rules in government, the, uh, money that you have left over at the end of the year that you carry into the next year is shown as income again rather than an asset that you have. Uh, we have intentionally over the course of the last couple of years been holding money aside because when you do large paving projects, the more you do it once, the better rate you get. Uh, we've been doing spot patching and spot, uh, striping and things like that for the last couple of years, but not full-on repaving because this year we're letting a bunch of repaving projects. And so again, uh, just be careful that when you're looking at the budget, that you're looking at the income that's actually coming in as opposed to the money that's sitting there from previous years that we're gonna be using for paving this year. That was my only comment. Did it? All right. Next up is a report from our fire chief, Greg Brett. And I follow you.
Mayor, Council, citizens, and friends, I'm gonna use my time, if I may. I have a. I have a printed report everybody can refer to. We had copies of. I'm gonna use my time to introduce our latest recruit who's here, Christian Pace, and Chief McCarrigan, you come up, please. I'll do what Darryl did for me a minute ago, and you can tell the great things about Christian.
So approximately about six months ago, we took a chance on this young man. I've watched him grow up. So I had my doubts, but he's proved me wrong. He's gone through twenty-four weeks of EMS training and firefighter training. He is now officially certified with State of Georgia. Tomorrow will be his first day as a Chattahoochee Hills firefighter. So what we're gonna do is this red shirt is a recruit shirt. They're not allowed to wear any fire department items on them at all when they're going to training. They've not earned the right to wear that. Now you're official.
Wow.
So we have been incredibly lucky in our, in our whole history here at the city to have seasoned firemen from other departments move here to be a part of this community. And this is the first person that we have taken all the way through the training process to be a brand-new firefighter in the city of Chattahoochee Hills. And part of my mental math on this is that it's great to have people with experience to tell everybody what to do, and you also need somebody to get up the ladder fast. And, and here we go. Don't, 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 don't egg them on, don't egg them on.
We like to start if I, Mayor, if I need to answer any questions, I will.
I, I think you're good. Thank you so much for the work that you do because it's partly because of the incredible leadership we have in the city that we get people like this working here, so. Uh, next up is a police department report from Chief Little.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you have my report, and I'll be brief as well, just a few things. You see our dispatch calls are up one hundred and thirty-six point eight percent at three hundred and sixty for the month compared to one hundred and fifty-two for the same month last year. And so it's a continuing trend that we're seeing is a significant increase in calls for service, and those are dispatch nine-one-one calls. In addition to the three thousand seven hundred and six officer-initiated calls, which was a ninety-nine percent increase. And I'll remind you, those, the self-initiated calls are the, the ones that the officers actually observe something that needs their attention rather than waiting to be dispatched. So that, that number I expect to be higher because they're patrolling. Vacation house checks for this time of year, we had a zero. If you'll please remind your constituents in your newsletter and other communications, it's a service we provide. If you're leaving town, we will check your house twice a day. We'll email you, you know, the condition of the house, how we found it, if all windows and doors are secure. And just to give you that peace of mind that everything's okay, and especially in this community where a lot of these homes are well off the road and difficult to see. It's a great idea to have, to let us come out twice a day and just make sure everything's fine. Any questions that I can answer? All right, and then finally, as part of the Police Memorial Week, I'll be leaving next week to attend to police officers vigil at the memorial wall in Washington DC. And I'll be representing my boat during the three days up there, and I'll make sure to, to document it well so that you can see that journey.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. Next up is a Public Works report from Director Darryl Lundlund.
Hold on, let me swirl up here a little bit. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Chattahoochee Hills residents. Just, you know, you see that the bushhogs are going, grass is growing, and that's what we're, we're doing, a continuing scraping roads. Met with some people at TPL that's out at the Riverlands Park last week, and several, we put it on the Robbie's, that weekly report. Lot of people showed up, volunteers removing invasive plants and stuff like that and, and doing a lot of work for the city, all volunteer. This is great, you know, of course Chattahoochee Hills, we thrive on volunteers. That's what we do. And a lot of people showed up from outside of our city, a lot of people had a lot, very, very successful media. And as they, there was just, they were just going to visit time to time, do a lot of work. But I've noticed about every week, they're out there two or three times a week doing work at our parks. And that's just saving the city a lot of time that we have to do internal when it comes time to develop. Lots going on in the parks. I'm not gonna take away the Saturn, let you handle the movie, the movie night. But I, I'm, I'm normal. Everything's normal in my department moving forward. We'll be grass, we'll be cutting grass until can't cut no grass and grass quits growing. So, and also we're not gonna cut the fields because if you remember, last year we voted not to cut the fields, no, it was no, no more May. But of course, we, we, we spring a lot earlier than people up north, so we try to carry it into beginning, or beginning of May.
Did I hear a rumor that we have a porta restroom at?
We do. We, we have a porta john out at Hutchinson Ferry. It's before the second gate in the shade. And I asked us, make sure you please put that thing in the shade because, you know, they're already what they are, just keep the sun off of them. But they are, Robbie contacted some guys in a company in the city, and that's who we use at Rico Ballfield. They told Robbie that we was their favorite client.
For folks that haven't been to Hutchinson Ferry Park recently, there's a beautiful trail now around the perimeter of that park. Let's go there and not, you know, let's go there.
Would y'all have any questions for me? Thank you, guys.
Hey, Darryl, it was Cox Communications that brought that group down, right? I just want to shout out for them if it was. I feel like Cox, Cox has been doing a lot of the river cleanup work up and down the river at a lot of places, and they've got a Public Service Day thing that they do.
There was, there was a group out there, a mechanic shop. I can't remember the name. Yeah, there was, there was a company that owns a mechanic shop, and they have to be a big mechanic shop because there was twenty people from that one place. They had their own shirts made up, Volunteer Day, and this is what they do, giving back to the committee, uh, communities.
We'll figure out who that is.
I'll get that name definitely for y'all next time. Thank you all.
Great. All right, next up is Community Development Report from Director Morton.
Mayor and Council, I'll also be
Last day of his twelfth year.
Also be, also be brief. You have the building permit activity numbers in front of you. We're down again this month compared to a year ago. Twenty total building permits, three of which are for residences. A year ago, we had eleven new residences. We have a Planning Commission meeting scheduled for a week from Thursday, the eleventh at six thirty PM. The two items that I have right now for that agenda are two items that are on tonight's agenda also. The special use permit for an event center on Wilkerson Mill Road. At the last meetings, Planning Commission asked for additional information, and so we'll have a discussion of that. And then the first public hearing on the movie studio, which includes rezoning, three variances, and five special use permits. Those are on tonight's agenda for a first read, and we'll have the first public hearing at that meeting, which again is on Thursday, the eleventh, that's a week from this Thursday at six thirty PM. That's all I have. Any questions?
All right, whatever happened with the development up there off of
So, right, the, the hamlet, right? They got a rezoning to a hamlet, and they came in for their, for their land disturbance permit. They got their preliminary plat for phase one. They came in for a land disturbance permit. We gave them comments on the plans. They were going back to revise them, and I haven't heard since. Though it's been out for a while. I don't know what that delay is, but, so we still don't have the revised materials for their planning.
They cleared everything, ready to, ready to roll.
Yeah, they, well, so there was a lot of clearing done. I know that they planted within that phase. They planted a bunch of grass seed. They made it look really, compared to what it was, it looks, looked really nice in there. Of course, it's gated off, generally can't go back there. But yeah, they haven't really started moving dirt or anything that'll come under the permit. As you know, the roads are already in, a lot of pipes already in, but their plan moved some of those elements around. But yeah, they're not permitted to be doing any, any land disturbance in there right now. They did get a, they did get a permit for a storage container out there to keep some equipment in. But that's been enough.
Everybody's hands are very close to the kill switches, I know. Next up is a public hearing for item twenty-three dash oh-one-two. Do you have any for the public hearing? Do you have any quotes? You do, okay. If you would, please read the public hearing rules for us.
All right, I'm gonna read them from here since this on a microphone as opposed to standing up. The mayor will allow each side equal opportunity to the floor and establish time limits for this public hearing. If you desire to speak in support of or in opposition to the item, you must fill out a public comment card and turn it in to me, the city attorney. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by me. All speakers should identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable before beginning their presentation. In this case, each side will have ten minutes to present their case. All those speaking in support of the item shall speak first. The applicant may choose to save some of the allotted time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Those opposing the issue shall speak next. If any time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebut the final remarks made by the applicant. Following the presentations by the applicant, those speaking in support of the application and those opposing, the city staff shall present its position. City clerk will keep track of time and inform you when your allotted time has expired. During the public hearing, members of the city council shall listen to the presentation made by all those who speak. No action on their part is in order until the mayor declares a public hearing complete.
So I'm gonna get ahead of this conversation because we talked about this at the, at the work session. We have a public hearing scheduled. We're gonna go ahead and go through the public hearing because it's scheduled and we have cards. And the consensus at the work session was that we should probably table the actual action on this for a month so that the Planning Commission has time to make their recommendations to us. But we'll go ahead and go through this part of the process in any case. So Katie, you want to describe the project for us?
Good evening. Our applicant, Justin Robinson, let me adjust that a little bit, gotcha, is applying for a special use permit on his twenty-eight point seven acres on eighty-seven thirty-five Wilkerson Mill Road. This for an event center large in the RL District. Most recently, the Planning Commission, as you mentioned, the Planning Commission voted three to zero to recommend deferral of the proposal for additional information. We do have some recommended conditions if you'd want to hear them, but you want to hear the recommended conditions? Okay. I got this a little out of order, so my apologies. Okay, so the first recommended condition is the site plan submitted with the application will serve as a conceptual plan for the development. Any departure from the general concept will require council approval. The permitted capacity of the event center will be limited to one hundred and fifty guests. Any event to exceed this limit will require a special event permit for the city. Parking surfaces shall be made from previous materials, i.e. gravel and brickworks. And we have quite a few more. All buildings shall be enclosed to reduce the emission of sound from events. Events shall not start before nine AM and/or end after ten PM. Events shall be limited to Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. There shall be no music or amplified sound to exceed fifty-five decibels beyond the interior side of the two-hundred-foot tree buffers. No event activity shall be visible above the tree line. This includes fireworks, releasing paper lanterns, and other activities that could be a nuisance or danger to the neighbors. The required two-hundred-foot setbacks will be a vegetative buffer except for, except at the shore of the pond. Any location in this buffer has insufficient vegetation to provide satisfactory screening of non-residential structures or parking on the property. The owner of the property shall plant additional native evergreen plants to create an effective buffer. The two-hundred-foot setback and buffer shall also be required for any non-residential parking. And lastly, the driveway shall be relocated to the frontage to the east of eighty-seven twenty-four Wilkerson, Wilkerson Mill Road and located equidistant from the side property lines. Tree removal for the driveway shall be kept to a minimum. Those are the recommended conditions.
And Katie, it's possible that those might get added based on what the Planning Commission recommends, right?
Exactly, exactly, but they requested more information, so essentially to be tabled. Thanks.
Thanks, Katie. Rick, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to get clarification, since there are ten minutes for each side, and we've got several cards. Do, do we want to limit individuals other than the applicant to?
Let's do the same three minutes that we normally do.
Okay.
All right, first, Danine Crawford. Does the applicant have a card? Hang on, Danine, I'm sorry. Oh, you didn't give it to me. Well, that's why it's not in front of me.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. How y'all doing? My name is Justin Robinson. I am a chef. I own my own business. I go by Chef J. Robb. I own the Chef J. Robb Experience. I've been an entrepreneurial chef ever since I graduated out of college, and I purchased eighty-seven thirty-five Wilkerson Mill Road about two years ago. So it's been a slow process, but now, you know, I'm finally able to get to this point where I would like to present what I call this idea right here. So I like to have a commissary kitchen so that I can spread my wings. At the end of the day, everything that I've been doing has been out of my home, or same stove eyes that everyone else has. But my business has been blessed enough to grow to different clientele, different businesses, and I just need this space. And on my twenty-eight acres, I like to put my commissary kitchen over by the six-acre pond that I have. Also have the idea of having a wedding venue since I have the space in that area so that I can also cater weddings. I get booked for weddings quite often, and I figure why not have my own space so that people can not only book my services, but make a long-lasting memory on my property. And I'll leave the remaining time for any questions asked.
And Mr. Mayor, before I call the remaining folks who submitted a card, any of these folks wish to speak in favor of the application? Okay, then first one up is Danine Crawford.
Danine Crawford, five-five-seven-five Cochran Mill Road. I oppose the wedding venue application and rezoning at eighty-seven thirty-five Wilkerson Mill Road. Déjà vu is defined as the illusion of remembering scenes and events as if experiencing them for the first time. During the public comments section of the April City Council Meeting, I heard citizens expressing their concerns about a potential wedding event center on Wilkerson Mill Road. Their comments brought back vivid memories of four years ago when I was forced to fight for my property rights against the microbrewery. Their story is very similar to mine. I heard Ms. Johnson, who lives in front of the applicant, expressing her frustration with being the last citizen to be informed of this application. I was that citizen four years ago. I also heard Councilman Schmidt state that the applicant had spoken to all of his neighbors, and they agreed with this event center. I was that citizen four years ago. During the microbrewery debacle, I researched and educated myself on the policies and procedures of Chattahoochee Hills government requirements. Councilwoman Lori Schmidt, Cyril, actually helped me research a lot of this information. I discovered that the city is only required to mail notices to citizens that reside within three hundred feet of the establishment, and the legal publications are announced in the Noon and Time Herald newspapers fifteen to forty-five days prior to the public hearing. And the legal publications are announced in the Noon and Time Herald newspapers fifteen to forty-five days prior to the public hearing. I was hoping that this procedure would be, have been updated and revamped after the microbrew- brewery debacle. But it is apparent that that is not the case. Ms. Johnson also mentioned that the applicant shares the pond in question for the event center with two other residents. Although my dilemma was a shared driveway with two other families, the pond can become a major issue for the neighbors involved. How is this going to work for the neighbors that share the pond? How is the city going to manage each event to accommodate the applicant and the neighbors? At this time, my mother is seventy-eight years old and she is having to sue her neighbor that moved in and erected a fence around a shared pond. The neighbor claimed to be unaware that the pond was shared even after a survey was provided. Got thirty seconds. Okay, my mother's case is not a unique situation considering what you have been presented with this application. I will continue to ask this council to review and update the communication protocol to better inform the citizens of applications. Especially in the RL district. I am asking you to vote no for this event center for these citizens. Thank you for your time.
Next, Lenora Johnson.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Lenora Johnson. At eight-seven-two-five Wilkerson Mill Road. I learned a lot from the last meeting. I saw a lot of familiar faces and I just wanna thank everyone that has been there. For me. My neighbors. The community center. The nine-one-one help that I needed to call on to help another neighbor in the past. The police department. In the past and in the future. I probably will be calling on you. So thank you all. For just being there and all the alertness that you already have shown me. I have hope and a dream. That our homes remain safe and protected and many new homes to be built. I just hope that our dreams and visions are not over. Not. Okay. It's not easy when you work hard all your life and become a senior citizen. That retires and be thinking that your dream has come true. To wake up one morning and it can be taken away from you. It's hard to just live and be here in these days and times and to have your life changed forever. That's a lot. Before you can even live your life after you don't retire. Your dreams and your hopes. Might be just taken away from you. That can be changed right before your eyes. That's not easy at all. It's gonna be hard. Because one road deals directly. We like this. I'm hoping, you know, however y'all go, that y'all realize that there's another family actually on each side of that road. Thank y'all very much. Thank you for the help that I have gotten from the police department and the nine-one-one call. Thank you.
Next, Gloria Edwards.
My face is familiar. And I am Gloria Edwards at seven-four-one-five Cascade Palmetto Road, residence Chattahoochee Hills. I, my neighbors are teachers and preachers and other retired working bodies that could not be here tonight, but they are well aware. Um, Ms. Scott. Uh, my neighbor is here and we are speaking on behalf of Wilkerson Mill Road, Palmetto Cascade and uh Petersburg Road, which this proposed uh event center is right in the back of their yard. Okay. So. I have asked uh to speak on their behalf, okay? The site plan is not precise. I am so happy that the um P and Z saw these things is basically cutting paste from online to of somebody's dream. I have spoken to Mr. Robinson and told him, we're not against his dreams, but it's the location. We are in a RL district. My, my thing is he, on his plan, he says that I'm one hundred percent positive there will be no disruption to any neighbor's house. Houses or their daily routine and concern of traffic. How can he be positively one hundred percent sure when the confusion has already started before this? The, um, no comprehensive uh traffic study, noise study, so you cannot tell. The plan goes from unsubstantiated claims of grants from Mercer University. Then it turns to commercial kitchens, wedding, private dinners, motel slash bed and breakfast, and even a future daycare center. All right in the middle of a RL zone community, full community. With two houses, the, the, the concrete for the foundation is already in place. Now, so I'm saying that if this is approved, you know, this has to be citywide. So where is the, as we were promised when the city was first established? Where is the rule? Where is the country? If, if it's gonna be a pact of rule here and within that, somebody can come and propose a special. My thing is this, this is risky business. The community will not. It will be, as Ms. Johnson said, we're gonna impose our rights with the police or anything, traffic. It depends on who is the lineup at this event, and I just don't think it's gonna be a a quaint wedding dinners. It's not going to be. I just don't believe it based on my, uh, my situation as special event coordinator for the city of Atlanta. That.
Next. They have ten minutes.
I've got um like a minute and a half, but okay, I'll just keep track of the time.
Next, Fay Ball.
Um, I'm a resident of Chattahoochee Hills, the edge of it, and um. My location is seventy-four ninety Phillips Road. It is a little gravel road. Um, my concern is this. Zoning, spot zoning. Where does it stop? Where does it begin? We're in residential. We do not want it. The lady before me, she did an excellent job. There's no need for me to repeat what she said. Noise is an issue. Traffic is an issue. Um, I don't know if this gentleman has proposed that sewer is gonna be put into the property. And he's shaking yes. I, I don't know if he, we've just had a sewer line put in that will be eventually going to Chattahoochee. Um, to say our speech right by our property. And you have pumping stations that are not functional at this point. Um, so sewer is the, is basically a, a concern of mine. Uh, most people in the area are on water and uh which is individual wells, very few. Fortunately for me, I own, own city water. And I'm just one of a, because most people are off the road. And we have a neighbor that is already very, very noisy. And um for my house, just very close to his property, uh, he has a boombox in his car. And on weekends, it's not too good. So, um. My point at the end is this. Hear the people. Thank you for my time.
Next, Sean Hepler.
Thank you, everyone. My name's Sean Hepler. I'm Fay's neighbor. I live at seven-four-nine-five Phillips Road. See it on the map over there on the lower left, and uh I do oppose this, uh, but I won't take much time, but uh I moved to that property in August of twenty-nineteen. Thought it was the greatest uh neighborhood and community I've ever lived in. Fifty-five years old and I've lived in a lot of places. I moved from Atlanta. I lived there for ten years. Anyway, I'm very happy to be a part of this community and I do oppose this due to traffic, noise, drunkenness, and other bad behavior. And it just, you know, things just snowball when you start letting stuff like this happen, so I oppose it. Thank you.
That was the last one, Mr. Mayor. The rest of the time before the applicant.
Hey guys, so just listening to some of the comments, uh, just wanna first start off with Ms. Crawford, um, and her experience. Um, and her déjà vu with the four years ago with the microbrewery. Um, you know. The actual premises of this project, which is on the board, you can see that there's only three structures, my kitchen. Um, an open four-wall, um, that was proposed, open ceiling, but I am willing to um put into the um, I guess restrictions that it needs to be covered, and then the wedding venue. There's no microbrewery um where the premises is coming to an event or to a location to drink. I'm a private chef. This is not a restaurant. I'm not open from nine to five. I like my freedom to control my clientele. That's another point that I like to make with Ms. Gloria, um, as her experience as an event planner in the city of Atlanta. Her clientele, the people who she caters to, is a lot different from the people that I carry to, cater to if she's speaking in such a negative connotation. I know she's talked about, you know, um, respect and uh from my studies and to the actual plan that I'm presenting to you guys. But one person's um view and outlook on a project shouldn't be effective on everyone else's. It should be taken at the core. I invite everyone, as I do every single meeting, to go look at my Instagram, my website, Chef J Rob. You can kinda see the type of events that I cater to, type of clientele that I cater to, as well as the um. You know, my whole morale as a person. And uh, Ms. Lenora, you know, I, I would like to just point out the tone of voice and the difference from her first time coming to speak on this podium to now. Uh, me and Ms. Lenora, and also uh to Ms. Crawford's point, the other person who owns um the other side of the pond. I've had these private conversations after the meetings, um, and actually laid into them to understand their real concerns. Because at the end of the day, they're the direct ones who are in contact with my property. On the backside, owning the lake as well as the front side with Ms. Lenora. We talked about actual um buffers and different restrictions and solutions because of, you know, um, making sure that she's healthy and doesn't have to have any issues caused upon myself. Um, so that's the difference. And one thing that I also like to point out is that I know everyone is saying in the back of their yard, that in the day, I can't affect or control where my property is located in this city. And I feel like instead of viewing me as a potential harm to the actual neighborhood, that we should come together as a community and come up with a solution so that we can coexist. Cause I'm not selling the property. This is something that I truly believe in. Um, to Ms. Lenora's point, she moved out here um after retirement on a dream, and I moved out here to continue to do what I'm doing as my dream. Um, I have a lot of expectations and a lot of things that I would like to execute in my commissary kitchen, which is the primary reason of me moving out here is to cook and spread my wings. Uh, I don't want to get too caught up on the wedding venue and the negative connotations that people may think can happen or what possibly could happen. Again, I put all the events that I ever cater and that I do um host on my website, and that's chefjrob.com. There's a tab that says catering and you can see how I get down. You know, I love what I do. Um, I cook great food and my motto is changing lives one taste at a time. I look forward to doing that. Um, if there's any public or open remarks that y'all like to give, I'll be more than happy to answer every single one of them. Yes, ma'am. Not right now, okay. And I can't do that. I, I thought, I thought I could do it within my allotted time. Yeah, and uh, you know, Ms. Gloria, from the time that we spoke um from the first um public hearing to this time, you know, again, I, with you representing a large amount of the community. I don't have to say like y'all have to, is that, is a yes, a full yes, or for you guys, it may be a full no. Um, if you're representing majority of the community, I just ask that we continue this conversation again so that we can coexist as a community. I like when I see people get up here and they express how passionate they are about Chattahoochee Hills and how they've grown up here for years and years to come. I'm gonna be a person up here doing that in twenty, thirty years. So I would just like to again, receive the same respect as the respect that I'm giving to everybody and uh. And thank you for having me, guys.
Closed. Happy if council wants to talk about this, also happy to take the motion in a second to uh table this for the next meeting so that we can get that feedback that we were looking for from the planning commission.
Make a motion that we table it.
We have a motion in a second to table for one month, uh, in, in anticipation of hearing from the planning commission. All those in favor, please say aye. As opposed, nay.
Here's the poltergeist.
That's all it's doing. All right. Uh, next up is, let's see, we have no unfinished business. We have a couple of items of new business. First up is twenty-three dash oh-one-five, which is a first read on the uh amendment the ordinance to amend the zoning map to rezon sixteen-hundred acres for a potential movie studio in the form of a mixed-use hamlet. With some variances and special use permits going along with that. Mike, you wanna explain that one to us, please? Again, no action on this tonight.
Thank you. That's right. That's right. This is just a first read. Um, I'll just run through the uh, the, the basics of the application. Um, Kane Studio LLC has requested rezoning of one thousand six hundred and six-point-one-eight acres from RL Rural to HM Mixed Use Hamlet to create a film production studio. The applicant's also requested three variances and five special use permits. Um, the variances are, uh, one variance, um, from section five dash six dot G to increase the maximum open space that's allowed to be transferred off-site from twenty percent to fifty percent. So this wouldn't reduce the overall amount of open space required. In fact, uh, it would have the, the effect of, of, of increasing amount of open space. I can explain that in a minute, but uh what that would do is give them a bigger, a larger development footprint onsite. And then they would um, uh, in exchange for that, protect property off-site. Um, because of the way our rules are written. They would have to protect more land off-site than they would gain onsite because they need to maintain the overall um uh preservation ratio. Considering all the property that we're talking about. So it would, it would mean protection of more uh land off-site if uh, if, if it's approved and that variance is approved. Um, a variance from section six dash three dot C to reduce the minimum residential units required in the HMMU district from point five units per acre to zero and to increase the maximum allowable percentage of property devoted to non-residential units from twenty-five percent of the developable area to one hundred percent. So again, on that developable footprint, um, uh, that's inside of the sixteen-hundred acres. Um, they would be allowed to use, if this were approved, all of it for non-residential uses or up to hundred percent for non-residential uses. And they would not be required to uh, to provide any residential uses, whereas without the variance, they'd be required to provide uh, one-half unit for overall acres, so over eight hundred, uh, eight hundred units on the property. Um, and finally, the third variance is to eliminate all the requirements of Article twelve regarding thoroughfares in those portions of the development to which public access is restricted. Again, this lets them treat the interior of the studio kind of like um commercial driveways. They don't have to. Um, uh, those rules are, are based on the kind of uh thoroughfares, road network they would want in a community. But back behind the gate, it's a different thing. It's not, we're not trying to create this mixed-use community back there, so um, uh, and again, it's, it's uh uh, where the, where the public is generally not, not going to be going, so uh, it would eliminate those requirements. Um, and then the special use permits that they've requested um are uh for motion picture or sound recording facility. Uh, large, obviously the main, uh, main purpose there. Um, they also look, are looking for a hotel, a college, university, or professional school. And this would be focused on training for um, um, film, um, art and technology. Um, an event center large, um, so they could have gatherings of people on this, on the site, and um also recycling center. Again, this is focused on recycling um, uh, materials generated on the sites as sets are built and, and uh uh, taken down. Um, there's a lot of, a lot of waste generated in the recycling center would, would um repurpose those, those materials. That's what the application is. Um, and uh, again, this is just a first read. We'll have the public hearing a week from Thursday in the planning commission meeting, six-thirty PM, May eleventh.
We'll have the applicant again at our next work session and then another public hearing at our next council meeting as well. Anybody have any questions for Mike? And we have the applicant here too. If anybody up here needs to.
Yeah, Mike. Can you explain so people understand when they?
Yeah, Mike, can you explain so people understand when they preserve land off-site, how that works?
Yeah, I'm sorry, how the off-site preservation works?
Right.
So, um, they're not required to do any off-site preservation. In fact, the plan they've submitted, they have the open space. They're showing the open space they need, but if they need more footprint and that would, um, in almost all cases, except for maybe on the margins, require coming back and getting a, a concept plan change approved by council. Um, uh, they would, um, then be able to increase the developable footprint and they would have to, there are three methods, uh, that they can use that are outlined in the Unified Development Code. One would be to buy property off-site and preserve it with conservation easement. Um, another would be to, uh, purchase TDRs or, um, density transfer charges. Um, so you could do it through the TDR program, or you could do it directly, um, preserving the property. The, um, I don't know if you're interested in the, the math I was talking about, about preserving more off-site than onsite, but, um, to maintain the, uh, the sixty-five percent open space ratio, it's roughly two-point-eight-something acres that you'd have to preserve off-site for each acre that you gain in developable area onsite to maintain that overall ratio of open space to developable space when you consider the site and the other land they're dealing with.
Okay. And the TDRs, have, have any of them been sold yet?
Uh, no.
Do we have a price set for those?
TDRs are open market, um, whatever, whatever the negotiated, um, rate is. Uh, the DTCs, um, we will be setting a price with the, uh, fees that'll be adopted, uh, shortly, I believe.
Okay.
Okay, that happens with the budget.
And would you recommend with it, with it, because I heard something disturbing earlier. I wasn't aware that, that, is there gonna be an airport going in there?
That's not a part of.
Whatever. Okay. So would, would you recommend a project the size, that it be done in phases? Cause I noticed that at Trilis, I did a little research, seems like they've had to, eight or nine different times, they've had to come back for different zoning.
Right.
Uh, and, and my concern is, is mainly, I want to make sure that the DOT keeps up with the traffic along the same, the same format. You know, it seems like if we, i- if this thing gets approved all at one time, I don't know how a city with no code enforcement can actually, but we don't have the staff to keep up with. Uh, that's just the way I see it. I, I, I see the project going a lot, a lot smoother and a lot better for the people's acceptance. Um, especially if we can monitor by stages. Cause, cause I got a, I got a feeling it's gonna pass anyway.
So, so the applicant has proposed five, they've identified five places, phases in, in their application. Um, and that would get them to, uh, what you see on the, on the map. Everything that you're being asked to approve is in those five phases. Anything that may come after that would have to be approved by council as a modification.
Is that like ninety-eight percent of the project?
That would be a hundred percent of the project as proposed.
So that's my question. Should we approve this thing in phases versus the whole thing?
I see what, um, right. It is something, yeah. It's, it's something for the council to consider. Um, we would have to, uh, weigh the benefits. I think that it gives the, um, applicant a lot more to work with if you've, um, told them this is what you can do. Um, again, any changes would come over time. They would have to, uh, uh, get approved if it, if it varies conceptually from what they've shown.
Right. But if you do it in phases, instead of the whole, the whole monster get up there, you know, you can monitor one phase at a time. And if, if it gets built out, done correctly, you monitor phase two.
I have a question about that, Mike. Hello? Okay. So the idea about approving it with phases, I'm not clear how that would work because it's already gone through a regional review process. And the applicant came to us last year with the phase. And I get, I got that sense that, uh, they wanted the assurance, the whole thing would fit our zoning, which is why they came back and took the extra time to go through this development and regional review process. And that has passed through that app, that review process, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So that, if that's passed, how does, how would that work if the council were to consider saying, we want a phase when that's already passed and how, if we change zoning in the meantime, I mean, that seems a little, I don't know how that would work.
Should be happening.
And, and as far as the, uh, the, the traffic improvements too, that's dictated by the phase and the overtime. So, um, I mean, we can talk about it, but I think.
Well, we'll have, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? Anything you guys wanna? No good. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up is twenty-three dash oh-one-six, which is the consideration proposal, proposal for our historic marker signs. Uh, Robbie?
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council again. Uh, the historic marker signs, we talked about that during the work session and, uh, Brian Gross did the, uh, the, the work on this with the historic commission. And this has been a project that's been discussed for a couple of years. It came along with the wayfinding process. Um, and we were talking about including these historic markers as part of the wayfinding because it helps you find your way to things. These are a little different because these are markers now. Uh, the markers are, are gonna be placed with a lot of content where you can't just drive by and read it unless you drive really, really slow, then even so you can't read it. But we're, they're working real hard on, they, they picked the design, they picked a, a vendor and, and Brian's got those quotes. And, uh, we got Hotel Motel Funds to start this program. And, uh, we, we do have one, is that Cockermill Park that he's worked on. And looking to see, you know, just get one out there. Uh, it's gonna be like Horse Fins Black with a, uh, it's engraved. So, uh, I don't want to go into great detail. I don't want to take Brian's thunder because he's got a lot of more information, but, uh, he's done all the work. Uh, him and the historic commission, but, uh, Brian's been the leader behind this process. And I, I think this is the step forward that everybody's been waiting for.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We went through the proposals, uh, at the work session and, um, nothing's changed. We did have some questions from a councilperson, Searle. I think we've addressed the spacing issue with the recommended vendor. I think that was to your satisfaction. And nothing's changed except that we are still trying to nail down the, um, the PMS color for the, the, the color of the sign.
To match the other signs.
That's just the formality. Um, they can do it as long as we have the PMS color. Uh, that's not a problem.
Great. Any other questions?
So, so yeah, I love the sign, the content, the changes you made. And I would just like to ask, and I know it's the first one and you're just gonna see how that flies, but that, um, it, I don't want it to seem like we're micromanaging, but just to say, when we went through the wayfinding process, we got to see many iterations of it. So going forward with the next ones, as you do the next ones, if we could see the content for that as well, truly appreciate that.
Our intent is for it to come back through. We may present several.
Okay.
But that is intent that no, uh, purchase order will be issued until it's passed. But the, the wireframe, the style, the font, everything would just apply to the sign. And then we would get the digital rendering that you would see.
Okay.
It's great that we're getting the first one so we can all see it in, in real life. All right. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh-one-six?
Make a motion, we adopt twenty-three dash oh-one-six.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh-one-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, all those opposed nay. That carries unanimously. Next up is twenty-three dash oh-one-seven, similar conversation about the visitor app for the channelists. Similar in that it's the same crowd. Thank you.
Same crowd. Uh, this is, um, a mobile visitor app. We're calling the visitor app. Uh, it will guide visitors through the city to specific uh, points of interest, uh, historical sites, cemeteries, our parks. It will, um, believe replace the current park app. They're not satisfied with that one. So we're gonna incorporate, it's supposed to be, it's a, it's a very broad app, not specifically historical, uh, items, and it is scalable.
But that's also, we're gonna capture all the history that we've been capturing, which is fantastic.
Yeah. So we, we can, we can put, uh, the person from their phone, uh, it, we, it can send them to the site with the GPS. And it can show them any pictures that we, any content we put on there, pictures and content, more than we can put on the, uh, the markers, the historical markers, but also places where there won't be a historical marker.
Thank you. All right. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh-one-seven?
Make a motion to adopt twenty-three dash oh-one-seven.
With a motion in a second, any discussion about that? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed nay. That carries unanimously. And thank you, Brian.
On behalf of the historical commission, we thank you for your support on both items.
And, and on behalf of the council, we thank you for all the work you put into that. Next up is Mayor and Council comments. Um, I think last time I started with Ruby, so Troy.
Yeah, I need to, uh, read this statement that, uh, Mr. Richardson, uh, presented to me. This is my statement about the incident that took place. Uh, this is a written statement of myself, of the meeting in January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. On January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, Doug Cloud, Richie Schmidt, Dane Crawford, Robert Richardson, Mike Morton and myself met to discuss present TDR process and how the pending legis- legislation to add and to change that process would affect our city. As I remember, as the meeting came to a close, Robbie Rockavitz entered the room and Mr. Richardson and Mr. Rockavitz began a, began a, a conversation. I first started paying attention to the conversation when I heard Robbie make a statement that you may bully the mayor, but you will not bully me. At this point, Mr. Richardson replied, I'm not bullying anyone, but you had no right to call me out on social media the way you did. And I don't see how you can find me when the city is involved in the permitting process along with me. Robbie then replied, I know what can be done, and that is you will never be allowed a permit on your property again. At this point, Mr. Richardson began exiting the room along with Dane and Richie. I became concerned at this point if, if the city had a permitting process in place that included a viable performance bond being required of the movie contractors. And if so, would that alleviate the various burdens on landowners who enter into such contracts? Once I saw that, the tension was somewhat diffused. I left the room.
Anything else? All right. Camille?
Oh, yeah, I gotta switch. Sorry.
The batteries wear out?
Musical microphones. Um, no, I just wanted to say thank you. Um, this past weekend, we had a little rain out, but we made it two hours for our movie night. And I, I mean, I see Maria, I see Rodney, who I'm, I mean, I'm looking at a lot of faces that were out there smiling. I mean, we still had a, a lot of fun. Um, I met some new folks. Staff was super involved. Um, we really tried to do this where, I mean, we're maintaining our budget and we want to make sure folks have sweet events that we're not just spending money, right? So we have our own popcorn machine. We now have some branded materials. We have Chattahoochee Hills hats that you'll see around that we're starting, um, to sell to the, to the community so that we can, um, bring together a little money for our November tenth community awareness group. We're gonna have a, a gathering. And all of this has been spearheaded by Councilmember Ruby Foster. And this weekend, thank you to Councilmember Searle and to the mayor, um, for attending and just being supportive. Um, I think, you know, we have, everybody has so many things going on and it's the month of May and I hear that. I don't have kids, but everyone that does, it's the end of the world this month, right? So I, I find that if you take that little bit of time, I just have to tell you how much I appreciate everybody that participates all the time and staff really for being there.
Thanks.
Save the microphone. Um, I wanted to thank, uh, the residents in my district from Rickle Lake, uh, for coming out to a community meeting. Since our districts have been redistricted last year, we've picked up some new residents that, you know, actually didn't vote for us. So I'm in the process of getting to know these residents and sharing what we've been doing in District Three and just, uh, current events with the city and any kind of concerns they have. It was a really good meeting. Of course, one of our, um, one of the dear residents, Gordon Ramsey, passed away the night before and there was a memorial service for him last week and he was greatly honored. Uh, a wonderful man that's done so much for our community. So that was a nice memorial service. Wanted to address, uh, a couple of things I've heard residents, um, say in the open comment section today, that have kind of pulled at my heartstrings because I've gone through the same thing as far as where is the rural district? And why is it allowed to change from rural zoning to, uh, hamlet zoning or mixed-use zoning or other kind of zoning? And, um, so I was involved with the city from early on too. And what I remember was the original map with three places where the villages were gonna be. And sort of in the mice type, or maybe just in the back of my mind and I didn't pay attention, was a little phrase that, uh, a- a- and then hamlets would be dispersed along the city, that kind of thing. I've done a little bit more studying and, and rereading of those original overlays and the early zoning and come to find out, I just wasn't paying attention. Um, there is a RL district that came from Fulton County's Agriculture District. At one time, we were mostly all AG and you could pretty much do anything in addition to raising cows and farming. So, uh, that merged and morphed into being an RL district, um, through our comp plan session and then, um, revising the zoning over time. But what I've come to understand now is it's, it's kind of a placeholder for, uh, properties that can be purchased and rezoned into these hamlets. And I thought, when I heard that, I said, say what? What do you mean? Isn't there any safe zone? Can we have a safe zone in the city anywhere? So I've got my little five acres or whatever. And I know that some kind of other development isn't gonna happen next door, that I can retire in my home and kind of feel safe about it. And, um, the more I started learning about that, meeting with Tom and, and Mike, it, it all boils down to property rights. And while I'm more concerned about my five little acre rights, the guy that buys the land next to me has equal property rights. And that's been the hard pill for me to swallow as a council member is not to say that I'm not listening to residents, but to understand, at least for myself, it's a personal bias. I don't want the rural residential area to develop and that's a personal bias, but as an elected official, what I'm obligated to do is follow the city zoning. And that's been well thought out by many residents and professionals over the years to protect everybody's property rights and give equal property rights to people. And personally, I know I moved here from East Point, you know, twenty-seven years ago. Cause I didn't, I didn't mind having a neighbor. I just didn't want to know what they were doing when he was, put his hose out the second story window to wash his clothes and all the gray water was falling on my property going, I need another plan. So he moved out here and, and now I'm, I feel like I'm on five acres and protected, but I'm also a mile from Fox Hall Farm. So I realized we each have our own little bubble, whether it's a quarter acre or an acre or a hundred acres. But we each have the same property rights specified in our zoning. So, so that's the challenge to listen to residents and see, is there a way to address any concerns and still give everybody equal property rights according to the zoning? Maybe tweak it, ask the developer for some options, that kind of thing. But please know that if we vote yes or no, um, we're doing our best to put those personal biases aside and, and represent everybody. And, um, it's a tough job doing the best we can. And I just wanted to let you know that.
Richie?
Um. Yeah, I'll go ahead and read my statement first. Um, Mr. Richardson. Just so people understand, it was my meeting that day that took place. As a councilperson, you can have a meeting, you can invite whoever you want to the meeting. But anyway, it is, if, if some of y'all know this, I got broke up. I failed, broke a lot of bones. I requested a meeting with Doug Cloud. That I was told was the expert in the room when it came to TDRs. Mike Morton, a couple concerned citizens. And, uh, that's what, um, made the meeting happen. Anyway, uh, I'm glad that somebody typed this out for me because my handwriting is atrocious. It's really bad. On January twenty-fourth, I, Richard Schmidt, had a meeting at City Hall, my meeting, invited Doug Cloud, Mike Morton, Mr. Bettis, Ms. Crawford, Mr. Richardson. Subject was TDRs. Robbie was not invited by myself. Meeting started. Robbie was in meeting in his office. Um, when I kept asking Um, when I kept asking who the public administrator was who would be controlling the TDR decisions, Mike eventually told us it would be Robbie. I said, I was uncomfortable with the city manager having that kind of power. At that point, Robbie entered the room and apologized for being late to a meeting he was not invited to. At this point, Doug had to leave the meeting, he made it um, he made us very aware early in the meeting that he had a certain time limit he, he was on. Um, at this point, he had to leave the meeting, let me see where my. Robert was to my right and Robbie was at the end of the table. Um, Robert asked Robbie, why did you call me out on social media and threaten me with a fine? Pretty sure he said that is a very unprofessional. Uh, Robbie responded by rearing up in his chair, he actually pushed his chair back, clenched his fist, telling Robert in an angry voice and said on three occasions, you are not going to bully me like you do the mayor. Uh, this response made me stand up, I pushed my chair back, I assumed there was fixing, I was fixing not to break up a fight. Um, Robert stayed calm and in shock at, at this reaction, I recalled Troy Bettis um, trying to call, calm Robbie down. And Robbie looked at Robert and said, since you're making the money off the permit, I will fine you and the movie production company, also stating with a hostile tone, I will make sure you don't get another permit. And, and this problem won't happen anymore. Bottom line, behavior was unbroken, uh, it was verbal abuse, it was threatening and made clear, uh, Robbie controlled this man's ability to get permits. Um. Made clear his ability to find a citizen as well. What was worse was the body language and tone and the fit, and the fist clenched made everyone pretty uncomfortable. Um, in another work setting, um, truth is, you would have been dismissed. Um, I took a lot of people outside, I know Troy stayed back, uh, I think about ten minutes, uh, to play Dr. Field. That's, that's what I said, that's what's here, uh, to play Dr. Field, Robbie, um, anything else, just ask. Um, bottom line was a tough situation, I did not know until uh, Mister Richardson mentioned that tonight, if this was supposed to be a process that was supposed to be handled in public. If that was the case, if that is the law, it definitely was not handled in public. Um. You know, I, I hate that that happened, but that is what happened, and um. I don't, I don't know what to tell you, Mister Richardson, h- how, how the whole thing's going to unfold, but I, I hate that you had to deal with that. It wa- it was very unprofessional. Um, on another note, you know, I, I hear citizens as, as things keep going, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody, this is, I think, the fifth, sixth, or maybe seventh meeting in a row. That the meetings have been very well attended, and that's good, I mean, more people should, should be showing up for these things to know what's going on. Um. You know. To address something that, that you mentioned to me, um, as far as notification, the three hundred foot buffer or whatever, you know, there's a lot of people in this town. That, you know, if I live here, both my neighbors could be here and here, and they're just not within three hundred feet, so by law, I ain't going to make you nothing. Uh, that is something I brought forward to get changed, just like I brought forward the paper and show, showed you how we could cut it by sixty-five percent. Um. Crickets, so you know, that has been brought forward, you know, unless we have participants up here that want to change some of that, nothing gets changed, that's just where we're at. Um, also, um. You know, I, I, I think this lady made it v- very, um, very good point talking about the spot zoning, I think she's dead on there. You know, a lot of cities, you have commercial areas, you have rural areas, you have this and that. Um, yeah, things, things can change, and in our town, it all changes with a special use permit. Anybody can apply for it. So, you know, and, and it is systematically breaking down, you know, I, I've received a lot of phone calls, some of y'all may have been here at the meeting, when I said you're a war. Had a lady stand up, said, oh, she's very disturbed by that. Um, mayor said the war's outside of our city, I've said a million times to a lot of people, you're, you're actually ludicrous to think that you can control what other people do within the confines of their own city, that's their own city. The war right now is on your own zoning. Okay, when you go back and look at the zoning, what was taken down was the land requirements were literally cut in half. To establish some hamlets and villages. Um, you know, if you go back and review the meetings, that, that's what's taking place, so you know, I don't blame some of you citizens for feeling, I feel the same way. Where I live, you know, the idea in the beginning was three major developments and try to keep the guts of our city kind of the same. Um, I get it if you got a business and it's, it's something to do agricultural, dogs, cattle, whatever, um. But you know, there's not a line in the sand in this town as long as you have a special use permit. Okay, that's the kicker, that's the way I see it, anybody can apply for it, you get enough votes, bam, there's a business next to you, there's a business next to you. So um, and I am all for property rights, I am, but the original tent out here, and I think Mister Nigra proved my point the other day, when he was speaking. Um, about the amount of revenue that comes in here, uh, you know, when you're a town that's going to try to preserve, um. You know, at the end of the year, you're not going to have twenty million dollars to play with, you're not anticipating that, what you're doing is you're paying your bills. Making sure your staff is paid, and we do have some good staff, um, making sure you got, got what you need, take care of the roads. And you add a few new things every now and then, that's kind of what we do, you know, so um. A- am I happy about the studio? Well, it's not near me, I'm happy about that. It's not near me, okay? But um. But you know, I always envisioned three big developments here. What has me more concerned with anything is the way, in, in my opinion, um, the zoning has been stripped down to allow just about anything. Um, it's allowed to make it possible, nobody people tell you, oh, no, you don't understand it, you don't read, you don't do it, whatever. Um, but that's the bottom line, you're seeing it unfold right in front of your own eyes. So um, I do appreciate some of you guys speaking up, um. Sorry, Ms. Johnson, not a lot I can do for, do for you, Lenore, um, it's just, you know, I, I do think Obama give credit where credits do. Uh, you know, he made it real clear, change happens because people, people speak up. And I'll add a little caveat, change happens because people don't. So, if you um. Feel the same way I do, you know, you got to keep fighting for what's yours, that's, that's pretty much it, but I do think the spot zoning, I think that's a great, um, a great way to look at it. I really do, and I think that's what we see going on right here, and um, that's enough from me, guys, glad y'all came out, go dogs.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out, um, Mister Robinson, I want to say, um, I um. Applaud you for your uh, business and to be able to be an entrepreneur. But I have had conversation with you about some of my concerns. And um, also, I want to say to the citizen, I hear your concern as well. Uh, I want to also thank um, Camille for um, organizing the movie um, last, um, last week. Last year, we started our first movie in April of last year, and so this year, um, I challenged um, Camille. Um, to take on and organize it, and she did a great job, so I just want to say thank you for organizing it. And um, making sure that we had everything that was there, although it rained, but it still was a great turnout. And also, um, Lauren Storm, um, she's been also organizing this year the senior um, events. And um, I want to thank you for doing that as well, we do have another senior event coming up, June the fifteenth. Uh, it'll be here, uh, AARP will be the sponsor, and so there will be a registration because they will be actually um, buying meals for everyone, so you will have to sign up for the meal. Um, so that is coming up, and also, uh, May the tenth, we're going to be doing Zuma at the Cedar Grove um, Community Center, that's at four forty-five in the evening. Until six PM, if you would like to come out and do Zuma, um, you can come out and join us that evening. And I think that is, and again, I want to say thank you, and I definitely hear your concerns, thanks. The, the first one, I'm actually paying the um, instructor, and then we would go from there, okay? Thank you.
You know, the, the easiest things in the world are to just say yes or just say no. Uh, if you look at the cities around us, you see the impact of just saying yes to everything. Uh, and it's easy to see that now on all four sides of us, there are developments literally on all four sides of us, drive down Tommy Lee Cook. Every single parcel that hasn't already been developed has plans on it, has a driveway cut into it from where they're starting to build houses and all of that. Same is true down Caps Ferry into Douglas County, uh, there are huge developments scheduled on that road. Uh, drive up South Fulton Parkway, uh, you know, that was supposed to be mixed use developments up the parkway, and instead, it's all warehouses. Uh, Palmetto, all warehouses, and every time you drive through, you see another place where they've cut down another fifty acre parcel of trees for another warehouse to go in. So that's easy, just say yes to everything. Or just say no to everything, right, just say no to everything. Uh, because the reality is, nobody wants anything in their next, in their yard, right? It's easy to say hypothetically, yes, we've got this development plan, we're going to let these things happen somewhere. And everybody's like, yeah, it's a great idea, we're going to save seventy percent of the city, and thirty percent is going to get development, which is what the message has been from the very beginning. But when it comes down to it, nobody wants the thirty percent anywhere close to them, and again, it's the easiest thing in the world then, just to say no. Now, you know, people that say no to things that are in their zoning find out that you don't get to keep that no, right? The quarry over in Carroll County right now, that they said no to, because quarries are in their zoning, right? That quarry owner sued them for two years, county fought that, and now the quarry is going in, it's allowed in their zoning, we don't allow quarries in our zoning, so we've been thoughtful about that kind of thing, right? Twenty-five years ago, thirty years ago, people from this community lobbied Fulton County to have South Fulton Parkway put in as an economic development driver for this area, right? Because nothing's ever happened down here, our property values are poor. And South Fulton Parkway was put in with that in mind, and then people from the community got together and went to Fulton County and said, hey, we don't want. To be like every place else in Atlanta and get paved over, and that's where the first overlay came from. And if you look at that overlay, it has the same language in it, similar language to every one of our comp plan updates that we've done with the whole community involved. Which is, we recognize that you just can't say no to all development, especially when people have bought huge tracts of land specifically to develop along an economic development parkway that has been put in, right? But you can direct it, you can focus it, you can limit the way that it happens, and that's what our zoning has done from the very beginning, from the very beginning. The, the idea that numbers have been halved and changes have been made to make the studio and all of that, I mean, I, I know there's interesting soundbites in that. But I am happy because I know all of the generations of it, to walk anybody through that conversation in detail. Right? I mean, numbers have changed a little bit here and there based on what an expert says is the best way to manage that thirty percent, and the best way to manage the seventy percent. The TDR ordinance has been strengthened to make sure that as the development happens, people that don't develop get more money for not developing as an equity thing because they're not. The fact that hamlets can happen anywhere, you can get enough land together for them is not something new, that has been since the overlay since before we became a city. Right, I mean, these, these things are not new, and they are hard, because at the end of the day. To preserve the seventy percent of this community in as close to its natural position, its rural condition, and I'm talking about character of community and land, right? I mean, you know, you go to Smyrna or Roswell or Alpharetta or Coming or any other city in the Atlanta region. That's this far out or further, and look for Providence Church. It's not there anymore, right, none of the rural community is there anymore, because nobody has been able to manage this process. Again, either try to say no to everything and they just bulldoze you, or you say yes to everything and you end up like our neighbors. All of which to say, this is not as easy as it looks, it's not as easy as it looks trying to figure out how to weigh the pros and cons of different types of development. That are going to make that thirty-seventy thing happen with the least impact possible to the neighbors and the most benefit to the city and the citizens, right? There are industries that we've looked at in particular because they are lower impact than most and higher revenue than most. Our last comp plan actually singled out movie studios as a target for development here. Because they have fairly low impact for their benefits, and I, I mean, people shake their heads, but it's in there. The, the reality is that those sorts of things are the kind of hard decisions that you have to make, and I'm not saying that the movie studio is a foregone conclusion. But I am saying that you have to weigh those things, you can't just say no to everything. If you don't follow your own zoning, you don't get to keep your zoning. The impacts that we talk about, you know, we talked a lot in these meetings about the impacts already happening from outside, people complain about traffic on South Fulton Parkway, none of that's happening from anything that's happened here, yet. People talk about more traffic on Campbell and Redwine, none of that's happened from anything that's happened here yet, I get it, right? People talk about all the extra police calls, and we get people coming in from towns outside and knocking on doors with guns in their hands and whatever, that and people from Chattahoochee Hills. Right? We want more police officers here to, to police that kind of stuff, we want more police officers to police our no through truck routes and things like that, you got to pay for that, right? People call to complain about potholes and all of that, you got to pay for that, and those people that are driving through our community anyway to get to the stuff outside aren't paying for any of it. I mean, again, I, I'm not, not wanting to say that it's not right to not want something next to your house, I get it, I do, I do. And it's not that simple, and I just hope that you give people the forbearance to let them walk through the process and be thoughtful, there's a lot of thoughtful work going on around that. Uh, the impacts are here anyway, and they will continue to be, the zoning has allowed developments that pay for the preservation since before we were a city. The idea that, you know, a movie studio can get an extra twenty feet on a building with the condition that it's not visible from anywhere outside of the movie studio. Is not the thing that allowed the movie studio, right, this idea that we changed the zoning to make it so that a studio could come, that's not true. It's a small detail, and again, won't even be visible from the street, and we allow that height in other places too, under other conditions, it's not a major change to anything. Right, so again, the idea that. The idea that there's some fix in and it's not being thoughtful is just wrong, and. We'll, we'll talk about that in the work session because that, that deserves a thorough conversation as well. Anyway, I, I appreciate everybody being here because it's important for us to hear from neighbors about projects that might be in their backyard that they might a lot want. You know, this idea of things happening on parcels out in the community, and to Richie's point, right, somebody wants to put a dog kennel in in someplace, it feels very much like a rural enterprise. Unless you happen to be the house next door and have dogs barking all night, right? You want hunting for sure, right, that's one of the things in the rural character of this community, unless it's your neighbor doing target practice for twelve hours a day. Right, this stuff is stuff that's hard to balance, it's just not that easy, so a- again, I, I want you to have some faith in the process because there's a thoughtful process happening here. And it's not happening without considering what people think, but it's also. Unrealistic to think that we're going to be able to maintain this city with nothing happening here, it's unrealistic. It's not realistic in the context of Georgia zoning law, it's not realistic in the context of twenty years worth of zoning that we've had in the city, so. That is it for me. Uh, can I get a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting, please?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second adjourned, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned at seven forty-eight.
You want to have the.
We have. I just needed a sip of water, we always end the meeting with the town hall session, I'm going to be careful about how we do this tonight, right, because people want to talk about a lot of things. Hey, folks. Anybody who wants to, we have staff here, if you have a question about.